Everyone, this meeting of the Glen's Falls Planning Board is a virtual meeting authorized by the New York Executive Order 202.1. The public is participating via Zoom, which will be muted as they sign on. The meeting has been advertised on the city's website and notice of which has been posted. This live Zoom meeting is being recorded and will be made available shortly after ending on the city's YouTube page, which is available at www.youtube.com and searching for City of Glen's Falls. If you wish to participate by making a statement or asking a question, please wait until the moderator opens the meeting for public comments. You should raise your virtual hand, which is found in the reactions section of the bottom of your screen, or simply raise your hand until you receive a text stating that you'll be called on, called upon, in the order in which you have signaled the meeting administrator. And with that, let's begin this meeting of the Glen's City Glen's Falls Planning Board. Mr. Bruno, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Babe. Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the January 20th, 2021 meeting of Glen's Falls Planning Board. Before we get into the heart of business here, a couple of things that are kind of a housekeeping, I guess you call them. Number one, I'd like Mr. Curtis to introduce Megan Nolan. As you're all aware, I think Noreen Dove retired a week or two ago, and I believe Megan is taking her place and that Bob knows her better than I do. I'd like him to introduce her to all of the planning board members.
Mr. Curtis, unmute yourself.
You're muted, Bob.
Wait, is it better now?
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Sometimes it's a good thing.
Yes, certainly in my instance. Noreen retired on January 8th after 23 years with the city, and we thank Noreen for her service to the city and especially to this planning board. Megan Nolan is the city's webmaster. Megan worked in the city clerk's office some time ago for several years, and so she has some experience there. Megan is still doing the website as webmaster, and she's taking over the deputy city clerk duties. So this is the baptism by fire for Megan on the worst, the longest meeting probably in ages. Thank you, Dan.
Well, welcome, Megan, and please reserve judgment after this meeting. Don't go running out of the building. But what I'd like to do, I'm the chairman of the planning board, which all that means is that I get to take all the grief and stuff and set the agenda. Other than that, I have no more authority than any other member, and I'd like each of the members to go around, starting with Mr. Hall, and just introduce themselves to you.
Hi, I'm Ethan Hall. I'm a member of the planning board. I'm an architect here in the city. I've been on the board for, I don't know, off and on for about 18 or 19 years now.
Bridgette? You there?
Muted.
Okay. Rachel?
Hi, Megan. Welcome. I'm Rachel Murray. I've been on the planning board probably about four or five years now, and we welcome you.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Hi, Megan. How are you doing? I assume I'm in the planning board. About all I got.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Accardi? Peter?
Peter.
Can you hear me, Peter Accardi?
Peter?
Okay. Peter Accardi has been on the planning board for many years. He's a valued member. Bridgette, introduce yourself to Megan if you would, please.
Hi, my name is Bridgette. I've been on two years, I think, now, on the planning board.
Yes, doing a good job. And we have an architectural consultant, Ian Brown. I don't know if you know him or not. I don't, unfortunately, I don't think he's on here. And our attorney, Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Fitzgerald, you probably know him. So that'll do it.
Yes, hello, Megan. Ed Fitzgerald.
Did I miss anybody, or if I did, just speak up? Anyway, the next item, I've had a request to revise the order a little bit and take items on the agenda, not the legal ad, but on the agenda items D, F, and I, and put them in that order. So I don't know if anybody has any objections. If you do, that's fine. Just let me know. But as you know, I put these things, I determine the order simply by the magnitude of the application. I just try not to have people hanging out there, if you will, that have something like a sign permit or subdivision or a curb cut that may not be as lengthy as some of the other stuff, and I just try to rate them and put them in that order. So the last item, which is subdivision 20-0026, 333 Glen, could have been a lengthy one. But again, the request is to take those in the order of D, Site Plan Review, 20-0050, F, Architectural Review, 20-0047, and I, Subdivision 20-0026, 333 Glen Street. If nobody has any objection, when we get to them, we'll take them in that order. Is any, anyone adverse to that? If not, we'll proceed. The next comment is for 333 Glen. This is for the public. This is limited to subdivision only. We're not considering any development on that site. There have been nothing, nothing presented to us. That couldn't be anyway because it hasn't been subdivided yet. So I want, any public comment is limited to subdivision only. We will not entertain any comments regarding the possible development on that property. So, and additionally, I will limit public comment for each individual on any of these, and especially this in 471 Glen, to three minutes per individual. And with that, I guess we can get started with the approval of the minutes from the December 1, 2020 Planning Board meeting. They have a motion.
I'd make motion that we approve the minutes of the December 1 meeting. Did anybody have any other comments before I finalize the motion?
No. Well, we'll get them out. We'll get a second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay.
Have a second on that motion?
Second.
Who is that?
Me, Brian.
Thank you. Any, any discussion, any?
No.
There being none, I'll call the question all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you. The next item under new business is subdivision 20-0046. Thomas Del Signor, owner of tax map number 309.11-12-26, commonly known as 69 Fifth Street, is seeking approval for a lotline adjustment at this location that moves his side yard boundary approximately 10 feet into tax map number 309.11-12-27, commonly known as 65 Fifth Street. His neighbor at 65 Fifth has approved this. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter 192, Section 192-4, this application requires planning board review and approval. Are there any comments from the applicant? Is there anyone representing this application? Let me ask that.
Hi, Dan. Matt Steves. I'm representing Del Signors in this application.
Very good. Thank you, Matt.
Pretty straightforward, as you've already indicated. It's adjusting the lot line to basically center the existing, or the new lot line between the structures, kind of utilize the usage of the property. I'll say both parties are agreeable to this, and it still meets the minimum for each code, and it doesn't affect any of the curb cuts that are currently on either property.
Very good. Thank you. Any members of the public care to comment on this application? If not, we'll proceed with our architectural consultant who submitted his comments in writing. He recommends approval. Hello? That's Mr. Dan Brown. The city engineer has no comment. We'll begin with the planning board. I'll start with Mr. Hall.
I reviewed it. I understand where you're going with it, Matt. I understand where they're, you know, what they're trying to do here. I don't have any real problem with it. I think both lots are fine.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I'm with Mr. Hall. I have no problems whatsoever.
Very good. Mr. Accardi? Okay. Where's Rachel? Ms. Murray?
I have no problem with it. No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Colligan?
No comments. I have no problem with it either.
Thank you. Any seeker resolution required here, Mr. Fitzgerald?
There is. It's an unlisted action, so I would proceed to do a seeker review.
Bear with me.
No problems with me.
Pardon me?
Here we are.
So we do tell you, we do need the seeker review?
Correct. It's unlisted.
Okay. Okay, so we'll proceed.
They're talking. They hear you. They can. Yeah. When it's around, they can hear you. No problems with me.
Okay, I'm going to proceed with the seeker, part two. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No.
No.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No.
No.
Result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
No. Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No. No.
Will a proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies?
No. No.
Public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No. No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No. No.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and fauna?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No. No.
Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No. No.
No. Okay. Therefore.
Can you go ahead and read that in, Dan?
Pardon me?
Do you want me to go ahead and read that motion?
Yeah, would you, would you please, I?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board hereby accepts lead agency status for the applicant, which is, sorry, Thomas Del Signor, owner or agent of the property located at 69 Fifth Street. The board has determined the action to be an unlisted action. They have reviewed the short form environmental assessment form, and upon documentation and discussion, issues a negative declaration.
Second. Second by Bridgette?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we need a motion regarding subdivision.
So I'd make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board hereby approve the subdivision of Thomas Del Signor for the premises identified as 69 Fifth Street, the subdivision based on the map that was provided by Van Dusen and Steves at the meeting of 20 January 2019, or 2021, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Back and back.
Second again. I'll call the question all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Very good. Next item is subdivision 20-0048. Glen Swallows National Bank and Trust, owner of tax map numbers 302.20-28-12 and 302.20-28-13, commonly known as 240 Glen Street and 250 Glen Street respectively, seeking approval to combine these two parcels. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter 192, Section 192-4, this application requires planning board review and approval. Is there anyone here representing this application?
Yes, Chairman Bruno. This is Tine Casatio and Sandy Helme from JMZ Architects and Planners.
Welcome. Thank you. Any, any comments, anything you'd care to say or add to this application?
Just be very brief. The, the goals are to consolidate and rationalize internal circulation, and in order to do that, from a code standpoint, we have to remove the property line. But removal of that property line also recognizes and acknowledges that the two buildings have been used as one for many, many years, and will continue to be used as one. So it's really just a formality.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that care to comment on this application? If not, I will read comments from our architectural consultant. Mr. Brown, his comment recommends approval. Application includes structures when the city's three-square historic district and individual listed structures. And the city engineer has no comment. Therefore, we'll proceed with the board. I'll start with Ms. Colligan.
I have no questions or comments.
No comments. Ms. Murray?
No questions or comments.
Mr. Accardi? Any comments, Mr. Accardi? I guess not. Mr. Green?
No comments or concerns.
Thank you. And Mr. Hall?
Similarly, no comments or concerns on my end. I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, seeker required here?
Yes, same status as the last subdivision. You should conduct the seeker analysis.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Part two, impact assessment. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No. No.
Will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community? No.[1157.08]
No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay, that said, make a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board hereby accepts lead agency status for Glens Falls National Bank and Trust owner of property located at two forty Glenn Street and two fifty Glenn Street. The board has determined the action to be, what do we say, unlisted?
Yes.
And review the short form environmental assessment form submitted upon documentation discussion issues a negative declaration. I have a second.
Second.
All the question, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to Glens Falls Planning Board proves the subdivision the Glens Falls National Bank and Trust with the premises identified as two forty, two fifty Glenn Street as presented at the meeting of January twentieth, twenty twenty. Does that leave anything out there?
We want to say that that's based on the map of Dara Land survey.
Very good. Include that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pose the question, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So Dan, are we going to wait on the next part because is that the same? I mean, it's the same applicant, but a different application? Item G, are we gonna, we're gonna wait on that one?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to.
Well, as I understand, I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
No.
I want to put my, put my stuff in order here.
It's a good point. The board okay with that? It's a good, good point. I didn't even. Okay, we'll jump to G. Architectural Review twenty dash zero zero four nine. Glens Falls National Bank and Trust owner of tax map number three oh two point two oh dash twenty eight dash twelve and three oh two point two oh dash twenty eight dash thirteen, commonly known as two forty Glenn Street and two fifty Glenn Street respectively. Seeking approval to renovate public entrances, provide ADA accessible doors and to replace all windows facing Glenn Street and South Street. Pursuant to city code chapter two twenty, section two twenty dash nineteen E. This application requires planning board review and approval. And once again, I'll ask, is there anyone representing the application?
Yes, Chairman Bruno, still us here at J M Z.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything you'd care to add to this or?
I would, I would simply say that this project is continuing the momentum of spot improvements to downtown Glens Falls. Significant improvements to both the streetscape and the elevations that face Glenn Street, South Street. And I know it's not mentioned in the application, but of course, the view from the Elm Street parking lot, which more often than not is starting to feel like the fronts of buildings. So all of the architectural features of the existing windows will be mimicked in the new windows. So the public would generally see what they see now. The changing of the windows will improve energy efficiency and allow the security of the bank to remain intact.
Very good. Thank you. Let's see. Our architectural consultant, his comment. Bear with me. Okay, item two G, Architecture Review twenty dash zero four nine, exterior alterations, two forty, two fifty Glenn Street. Comments, the this is from our architectural consultant, Mr. Brown. The properties are located in the city's three squares historic district and identified individually as A, the second Montgomery Ward Building, two forty dash two forty four. And B, Glens Falls National Bank Building, two forty six, two fifty two, in the city's register of historic resources and state and federal historic sites. As such, one questions, number twelve A and twelve B in the applicant's short environmental assessment form must be corrected to read yes to the applicant, applicant must indicate to the board whether or not he or she had, as the owner has received or will receive in the future, any form of public funding directly or indirectly. Many source that will finance the project work indicated as part of this application. If such funding will be acquired for such purpose, the application project must be submitted to SHPO for their review and approval. I recommend approval on condition that any window replacements match the existing units and that new windows simulate same. I note appreciation of the design of the new Glenn Street front entrance for its monumental character, which better harmonizes with the adjacent building fronts. Those are.
I can comment that the owner will be receiving no public funding for the project, therefore SHPO sign off would not be necessary.
Thank you very much. The city engineer has no comments. Therefore, we will proceed with the comments from the planning board. Mr. Hall, start with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, again, looking at, at what's going on with this, uh, you know, I, I really appreciate the, the rendered drawings that we got. Makes it very easy for us to tell what's going on and what's going to be changing. Guys have always done a great job with the, with the facade of the bank and the new building that took place over there. I have absolutely no issues with, with anything that's being proposed for the facade of this building.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Murray.
I agree. I think it looks really nice, particularly the Elm Street, the changes you're proposing to make to the Elm Street entrance. I think it's going to be beautiful. I have no.
Very good. Ms. Coligan.
I agree with both Ms. Murray and Mr. Hall. I think that it's, the design is beautiful and I think it will give the Elm Street parking lot a much better view.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Green.
I agree with all the comments that have been said. I agree with everything. It could be a great project and render fantastic. Thank you very much for those.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Accardi.
Oh, no comment.
Thank you very much.
No comment.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cardy. Let's see. I have no comments either. Seeker, Mr. Fitzgerald.
You would not need a separate secret review as this is qualified as a renovation.
Very good. Thank you.
The only thing we should note on that is the, is the change that Dan Brown mentioned to items twelve A and B.
Very good. Yes, thank you. And we'll entertain a motion regarding architectural review.
So I'd make a motion, Glens Falls Planning Board acting as the Board of Architectural Review hereby grants architectural approval to the project identified as Glens Falls National Bank and Trust located at two forty to two fifty Glenn Street as presented at the meeting of twenty January twenty twenty one with no amendments or condition.
Second, Mr. Green. Pose the question, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? No opposed. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thanks.
Okay. So we are I'm gonna keep track here.
Score sheet this week.
So pardon me.
I said, we have a score sheet this week.
Yeah. Okay, next is subdivision twenty dash zero zero four two. Corey Hyman, owner of tax map number three oh two point one five dash six dash six. Commonly known as thirty eight Hurrican Avenue, seeking approval that subdivision of this residential parcel to create another buildable lot at this location. Pursuant to city code, chapter one ninety two, section one ninety two dash four. This application requires planning board review and approval. This this came up, I believe, at the
December.
December. Any board meeting, which I was not in attendance, but looking at the minutes from that. Says the based on the fact that, and I'm reading from the resolution number seventy five of that date. The proposed lot would not be in compliance with the current zoning and in, and in anticipation some action by the applicant, either an application to the zoning board of appeals for approval of an undersized lot or a boundary line adjustment with the neighbor. So first I'll ask, is there anyone representing this application? Okay, that appears that there is no one representing it and I wonder you could help me out, Mr. Fitzgerald. Being that there's no one representing this and that, as cited in the resolution from the December, what date was that? December first, twenty twenty Planning Board Meeting, it appears that this would not be able to be subdivided. This application would be denied. Is that correct or?
It could be subdivided if the board wanted to approve it, but any approval would have to be conditioned on obtaining the required zoning variances. And I think there are at least two, if not three variances that they would require here.
Mr. Bruno. I'm not a, it's Chris. I'm not a hundred percent. Corey was notified. I was out last week and trying to get the new list, so on their defense. Yep, like it be known.
Yeah, well, I guess we can table it.
I, I think that's the proper thing to do because there's nothing different than what was, I, I, there's nothing different in my package. I don't know about anybody else's. But it, it sounded like when we, when she left the meeting last time, she was going to go back and try and figure out either a way to make the boundary work with her and the neighbor or do something different to make the lot so that it was more compliant or apply for zoning variance. And I don't have any new materials in this package, so I, I, you know, I, I think that in fairness to, in fairness to the applicant, I think we should table it.
I agree. Therefore, I make a motion to the Glens Falls Planning Board tables the application subdivision twenty dash zero zero four two, Corey Hyman, owner of tax map number three oh two point one five dash six six. Pending representation by the applicant or their appointed agent.
Well, second.
All favor? Any opposed? Thank you. So we tabled subdivision twenty dash zero zero four two. Okay. Yes, I neglected to ask for public comment there. Sorry, Mr. Pape, you should scold me.
That's okay. There is no one.
Okay. Uh, moving down, as I said, we're going to take D, F, and I in that order. So next item being site plan review twenty dash zero zero five zero, Prines Island LLC. Owner of tax map numbers through nine point one two dash twelve dash four and through nine point one two dash twelve dash five, commonly known as Reed Street. Parentheses, no street number. Seeking approval to raise an existing storage building and replace it with a larger one in the same approximate location. Site improvements, including gate fencing, paved truck entry signage and plantings are also proposed. Pursuant to city code, chapter two twenty, two twenty dash twenty one B. This application requires planning board review and approval. Is there anyone here representing this application?
Hi, Dan. This is John Lapper.
Hi, hi, John. You're there somewhere.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Sorry.
No, no problem. And Studio A Landscape Architecture should be on as well. And, and thank you for, thanks for taking my three projects together. I really appreciate it as I've got another meeting on Zoom, another plane board meeting afterwards. So by way of introduction, this parcel is, is owned by the Vogel family who developed the lodges at Crest Haven on Lake George that everybody's probably familiar with. They've owned this for a number of years and their tenant, ABC Roofing Supply. The current lease term was expiring and ABC indicated that they needed more space or they would be leaving the city. They employ about twenty four people at this site between drivers, warehouse people, salespeople and office people. And so what we proposed is knocking down an existing dilapidated building, replacing it with a brand new one. So it's going from six thousand square feet of building space to eight thousand. And to compensate for that, Studio A has added landscaping at the road, paving and signage and generally cleaning this up a lot from what's there now. We're making it less impervious and we were at the zoning board last night for two area variances, which they were all in favor of. But the zoning board members asked us if we could add additional green buffer on the back of the site, which doesn't border the feeder canal, but it's on that side of it. And there are some residents across the feeder canal and there are people that obviously use the feeder canal. So so we overnight, we modified the plan to add more landscaping on that backside and, and Kirsten is on it and she can talk about that.
Yep, that's correct. We added just a handful of clumps of evergreen trees to buffer that view from the neighboring residential properties. And we handled that in modifying the site plan. And then additionally, increased buffering along Prines Island Drive along the current fence that exists. And then we added some nice landscaping in front of the sign along with realigning it for the proper entry to the site.
Very good. Thank you. Bear with me, please. Are there any comments from the public? I know that I had received a I received a letter from Joan Dean. I think that this her letter pertains more to development, I believe. But it'll be entered into the record nonetheless. Also, Judy Colagero, is she on? She requested. I think she sent a.
I'm on.
Are you there?
Yes.
Would you like to comment?
Uh, have you moved on to three, three, four?
No.
No, we're not there. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting carried away. Don't worry, old age. All right. Any members of public? I'm sorry.
You're on Prines Island, correct?
Yes. Any members of public care to comment on that? Mr. Pape, anyone?
No, there's no one here.
No one there. Okay. Sorry about that. Got too many papers here. We'll proceed with our architectural consultant, Mr. Brown. Please comment, no concerns, architectural style and site use same or similar to existing. City engineer. Likewise, had no comments. So that said, we'll pursue, proceed with comments from the board. Mr. Accardi, any comments? Mr. Cardy.
Peter.
Okay. Mr. Green.
No, I think it's a good project. They're improving a lot with the landscaping. That building definitely needs to be torn down on or they're replacing. So I think there's an improvement all the way around. It's gonna look nice.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hall?
No, I don't, I, I didn't have any comments. Um, I, I do, I, I did hear the testimonial at the zoning board last night. So I, I understand where they were coming from on that. I appreciate the fact that Studio A put in the time today to update those items. You know, my feeling is that there is a fence line back there that has, in the, at least in the summertime, is fairly full of brush and stuff that runs along between there. So it's really not a visible sight from the bike way. Um, I understand that there's some people on the opposite side of the canal that, that, you know, weren't, weren't thrilled with the, with the view shed. But i- they are looking out into the industrial area of the city anyway. So I appreciate the fact that they've put some, put forth the effort to come up with additional landscaping. But other than that, no, I have no issues with this project.
Thank you. Ms. Coligan.
I have no questions or concerns.
Thank you. Ms. Murray.
I agree with the rest of the board. I think that that's nice and happy to keep them in the city and I think it'll be a nice improvement.
I agree. Okay, seeker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this would be an unlisted action. It's large enough that it doesn't qualify for a type two. So you, board should conduct the seeker analysis. And I would also note too, that as far as any conditions of approval go, I would just recommend that you condition approval on obtaining the area variances and also the county approval being practically adjacent to the canal. We have to send this to the county for comment.
One, one question, Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
The, the, the seeker form that I have doesn't appear, doesn't appear to be completely filled out. I don't know if yours completed, that it, there's all the information, but the
Right.
There, there was a, an updated form submitted that went to the zoning board. It may not have gone to the planning board. I know that Chris had that.
Yes, I can confirm it did go to the zoning board and you're right, it may not have made it to the planning board, but you did submit. Let me see if I can.
I brought all that into the office. I have nothing here.
If you bear with me, I will look and see if I can forward that to you.
Okay. So we are assured that a completed form was submitted.
Yes, it was emailed over yesterday. The request came from the chairman of the zoning board and they turned it around and emailed it back yesterday.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to, to review it, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have, and it looked fine.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll proceed with part two.
I will forward it to you for your records.
Very good. Thank you. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
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 Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics caused the establishment? CEA?
No.
Will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies?
No.
Public, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in natural, natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No.
No.
No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No. That said, I'll make a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board accepts lead agency status for Prines Island LLC owner property located at now tax map number three oh nine point one two dash twelve four, best twelve dash four and three oh nine one one two dash twelve dash five, because there is no no street number. Board determine the action is unlisted, action review the short form environment, environmental assessment form and upon documentation and discussion issues a negative declaration.
Second.
Second, all call the question, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Next, we need a resolution regarding site plan.
Put that together for you. I'd make the motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board acting as Board of Site Plan Review. Is this architectural and site plan?
This is a site plan. This site plan only. I don't think.
Act these board of site plan review hereby grants site plan approval for the project identified as what are they in here as Prines Island LLC. Located at the tax map number that was shown because there is no street number. It's the Prines Island and Reed Street. As presented at the meeting of twenty January twenty twenty one, subject to the following amendments that the zoning board approvals be obtained prior to finalization of the project.
Second.
All, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I would, I would note that in reference and response to Mr. Hall's question, which is a good one. There was no associated application for architectural review accompanying the site plan. However, there is, according to site plan, existing storage building is going to be raised and replaced with a larger one in the same approximate location. That the applicant should be aware that that requires architectural review.
Even in H I?
What's, what's that?
The zoning's H I.
Right.
Heavy industrial.
Right.
Right. So I thought it was not needed for the actual review because it's out of.
Hmm, I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
I can look at that section of the code after the meeting and let you and John know.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep, keep me in line here. Get carried away again. Next. Item. Is architectural review twenty dash zero zero four seven. Arc Trading Corporation, owner of tax map number three oh three point one three dash eighteen dash two. Commonly known as seventy six Cooper Street is seeking approval to convert the vacant building at this location to two retail spaces. Pursuant to city zoning, chapter two twenty, section two twenty dash eighteen D. This application requires planning board review and approval. And Mr. Lapper, I believe you're representing this application as well.
Yes, and Jerry Golub should be on as well.
Okay.
On behalf of the applicant, we were before the board, I think it was in October or November, I apologize. For site plan review, at that time, we were trying to get a boat storage use in the, in one site as a temporary use, but Jerry opted not to go with that. So we've now submitted for architecture review just to turn the, you know, former price shopper building into two separate retail spaces. He's very close to a lease with one side and, and, and working on a lease for the second side. So we submitted just for the architectural to show you what the facade would look like.
Very good. Thank you. Any members of the public care to comment on this application? Nothing, Mr. Pape?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
It's okay.
There are no hands up.
Thank you very much. That said, I'll read the comments from our architectural consultant. He says, no exterior alterations indicated in application, therefore no comments. And the city engineer. His comment is the applicant should direct roof drainage to a stormwater system. So that said, we'll begin with comments from the board. Ms. Murray?
I do not have any comments.
Ms. Colligan?
I do not have any comments.
Very good. Mr. Green?
I think I was already done. The site plan, we approve that still in that, this, this project? Yes. Okay. Okay. Other than that, I have no comments.
Mr. Accardi, any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hall?
No, I, I have no comments. I think that we looked at the outside of the building when they were before us back, like John said, in, in September or October, whenever that was. And I think this is just dividing up the two interior spaces. So I think that once tenancy is established, then, then we'll have another application in front of us. So, no, I'm good with it.
Very good. Thank you. I had no comments either. Mr. Fitzgerald, are we, do we need a seeker for this or did we do that?
You did the environmental the last time, and I believe it was actually because it was considered a reuse of a property. You did not have to go into the detailed environmental analysis, and that wouldn't change here. I would just note that this one did have to go up to the county for review and the county came back with no questions or concerns.
Thank you very much. That said. Okay. Make a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board acting as the Board of Architectural Review hereby grant architectural approval for the project identified as Clark Trading Corporation located at seventy six Cooper Street. As presented at the meeting of January twentieth, twenty twenty one. Were there any additional conditions? I don't, didn't write any down.
Just the one from the town, the city engineer regarding roof drainage being
Right.
Directed to the, to the stormwater.
Correct. Thank you. Anything else? Last for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Last the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Passes. Very good. Now, three thirty three Glen Street. Subdivision twenty dash zero zero two six, three thirty three Glen Street Associates LLC, owner of tax map number three oh two point two oh. There's twenty three dash four, commonly known as three thirty three Glen Street. Seeking approval to subdivide a portion of this existing parcel. Pursuant to city code, chapter one ninety two, section one ninety two dash four, this application requires planning board view and approval. And as I said earlier, comments are limited to subdivision only. We're not considering any development of this property at this time. So that said, Mr. Lapper?
So we, we were here last month when, and seeker was completed for this. And again, my client, the owner of three thirty three, the applicant is seeking to subdivide and sell this property. We don't know what's going to happen because the city has now announced that the city may want to acquire it. So all I know is that there's no plans for this applicant to develop this site at all. They just want to sell it and recoup some of their capital. And whether it goes to the city or to a private developer, it doesn't affect this application. That would be something separate. It's just to create a conforming lot so that it can be sold.
Thank you. Now, members of the public, as I stated before, I'm sorry, I was carried away looking at this stuff here. I've got a lot of papers spread out. Anyway, had a letter from, again, I think it's Joan Eldine dated December fifth twenty twenty, which would have been after the December meeting. So I'll enter that into the record. Now, College Arrow.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks for having me. I'm Judy Calagero. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Glens Falls. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Glens Falls Industrial Development Agency and Mayor Hall's Working Group for Community and Economic Development. I have served as the volunteer chair of the Glens Falls IDA since two thousand and six. And as a member of the mayor's working group since it was formed in July twenty twenty. I have submitted my comments in writing to the chair and to the members. And I would ask that the full content of that, those written comments be included in your minutes. However, they do include a reference to potential development of the site and at the chair's request, I will not discuss that at this time. I would note, however, that I did include a reference to possible development of the site. Because the application posted on your website makes reference to such a future plan development. And I would like to confirm what Mr. Lapper said, which is yes, the city has an interest in acquiring this site. We have reviewed the application for subdivision of the land by three, three Glen Street Associates. And while we do not object to the proposed subdivision of the land, we do object to that description of the proposed action in the application, which references the future proposed development. And we consider the subdivision of the land to be separate and apart from this development proposal as the chair has referenced. But by its reference within the application for subdivision, the applicant appears to connect the two. And so we ask that the application be officially modified to remove that language. And specifically the language that references subdividing a portion of the existing parcel for future financing and possible development. We further request that any action taken by the planning board to approve a subdivision of the land include a hard and fast condition that the city of Glens Falls have the first option to purchase the vacant part of the existing parcel should the owners offer that parcel for sale. I would also like to draw the planning board's attention to the downtown vision and development strategy, which was approved by the common council in two thousand and thirteen. A key feature of the strategy is the creation of the park district, which calls for improved open space and public park spaces that surround specifically the library and other parts of downtown. And in fact, I think many of us know through the generosity of the owners of three, three Glen, this vacant lot has been used for this purpose for many years to be used for gathering special events and socialization. The city has targeted this vacant lot to remain open space as part of the city's park district. And consistent with the public participation process that resulted in that downtown vision plan, we continue to have strong support in the community to implement that plan. So thank you for your consideration, Chairman and members.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Colligan.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Judy?
Yeah, you just beat me to the punch. I was going to say before we get any other comments from the public, I'd like Mr. Lapper to respond.
So we, we did amend, I know that the chairman wasn't present in December, but we did amend the application at that time to remove, on the record, to remove any reference to any future plans because that's not part of this application or this applicant. In, in terms of, of an option, the city has the right of eminent domain, so they can do whatever they want to acquire it. But the applicant is aware of the city's interest and there'll certainly be discussions going forward, knowing that the city has a right to acquire it at any time if they want it.
Very good. Thank you.
That I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, that the document that's posted on the city of Glens Falls website for the planning board that the amended version of the application be posted so the public is aware that those references to development have been removed. Thank you.
Sure, that's a reasonable request. I, I think we could make that happen if I'd ask Mr. Curtis, do you have a copy of the amended application?
I probably do. I, I don't have it right here with me, but.
No, that's okay. I'm just, if you don't have one, I would ask Mr. Lapper to submit one to you.
We, we did it on the record at the meeting, but we can certainly mark it up and resubmit it. Sure.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I would ask, before we move on with other public comments, I, I could hold it up, but Mr. Fitzgerald, what regarding the planning board stipulating that the city gets, I guess, right of first refusal, lack many better words, is that legal?
I would recommend that the planning board not include that as a condition absent further research, but I'm not aware of any right of the city to condition the approval on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public, Mr. Pape?
There are no hands up right now.
Okay, that's.
I'd like my, I'll give my comment.
I'm sorry, we have one, Mr. Concordis. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm on the board also with Judy, a lot of things. And I still think we should keep this a park and I was certainly would. I would like to see it. The language for she referenced to have the first refusal included in that if we could. The property they have is quite large. On the north end of the property, there is a similar lot there that could easily be developed. So certainly that would be something that could be sold otherwise. I think there's a, a large number of people in the general public that I've spoken to that want to keep this a park.
Let me just interject again. I don't mean to be rude, but we're talking about subdivision here. Any reference to any future development? Let me, let me finish. Any reference to any future development is immaterial to this board at this point.
I understand. So I have no problems with the subdevelopment, subdivision. But I, I think there has to be some stipulation on it. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comments. But the board, just to clarify, this board is, is limited legally as to what we can stipulate with regard to private property, its subdivision and its future uses. Correct, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Correct. Any conditions on any approval have to be rationally and materially related to the project in, like I mentioned, I'm not aware of any ability to make that condition. I understand the request, but I'm not aware of any ability to do that.
Thank you.
But Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that there has been that, that this has happened in the past. I may be incorrect, but I would just ask that that be researched. Because I believe that the planning board has in the past approved those types of conditions on subdivision. So I would just ask that the research be done and determine if that in the case, if there is a history of this.
Sure. Not a problem. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cordes and Ms. College Arrow. There being no others, we'll proceed with planning board. Our architectural consultant regarding three thirty three Glen Street. He states, I continue my concerns regarding the future of the subdivision, i.e. its location in Three Squares Historic District. Impact upon adjacent church, loss of open. I, I mean, here again, I have to state, sounds like our architectural consultant is getting carried away with future development. So I'm not going to bother to read anymore of that. This is subdivision. I don't mean to be rude or heavy handed, but that's what it is. We can't consider future development at this point, much as some of us may want to. The city engineer has no engineering comments. So I will start with Mr. Hall.
I have no additional comments. As far as subdivision goes, before anything can happen with this property, it has to be subdivided off in the first part. So this is step one of many and I have no objection to this subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I agree with Mr. Hall. It's a subdivision. It's pretty straightforward. So I have no problems with it.
Thank you. Mr. Accardi? Mr. Accardi, any comments?
He's muted.
Okay.
Peter?
All right, he comes out, we'll take his comment. Ms. Colligan?
No comments.
Okay. And where's Rachel? Where are you? I didn't see. It's hard for me to keep. Any, any comment?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can't see you. There you are. It's just a black square with a name on it.
Sorry about that. I'll fix that.
That's okay.
I, I, I have no, I, I agree. If we could legally do so, I would. I have no, I agree. If we could legally do so, I would definitely agree with Judy's recommendation to put. Put that as a condition, if we're able to do so, that the city has sort of the first crack at it. Other than that, I have no concerns.
Okay. Fine with that. Mr. Fitzgerald, you recalled it. Did we do a secret for this already?
Yes, we did.
You did. At the last meeting where you weren't able to attend, they did complete the seeker review.
Thank you. That said, I guess we need a motion regarding the subdivision. We will. I believe. Maybe Mr. Fitzgerald or Mr. Vander Zee could research the records to see if there was any. Or your appointee, Mr. Vander Zee, I know you're busy. Somebody could research and see if there's any precedent for the. Planning board, including restrictive language regarding the subdivision as to its. Sale or disposal, if you will.
I can look from a legal perspective, but I wouldn't be able to look at any past history in the city. There's certainly nothing that I'm aware of. I don't know if the code office. Would know. Chris, I don't even know how you'd go about searching that.
I'd have to have a property to look at the files, otherwise it would be years.
If I could just weigh in on that, because that's certainly not something that a planning board has the right to do. If you imagine. Of a municipal board could say, we want the municipality to have an option on something. That's a contract issue. But as I said before, the municipality has the right of eminent domain, so it can acquire any property in the city for a public purpose and. You know, a public park would certainly be a public purpose, so the city has all the rights to acquire it for fair market value. If they so choose, so you don't need to protect that because they have that right.
Right, I agree, and I've. I've been on this planning board probably too long, but a long, long time. And I, I do not recall any time our instituting any restrictive language like that, because. For me and my background, it would jump out at me, and I would say, you know, I really don't. I really doubt the legality of that, so we can take a look, but I. I tend to feel that it's not something we could do or should do.
I would agree with Mr. Lapper that it's what people may be thinking of is something that maybe there was a project in the past in front of the common council. Where that was a condition of the common council. Because they're not doing planning board review, they might have. Reviewed a request and struck a deal with an applicant with that. Condition, because they're operating under different. Procedures, so if the board was inclined to vote tonight, I would recommend that you not include. Any condition like that in your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I agree. That said, we have no seeker requirement. No other public comment, Mr. Pape.
Mr. Chairman, I know I may not have a right to continue to speak, but may I?
No, you can speak.
As I am here speaking on behalf of the mayor and the IDA and his working group, I would ask that you take the time to research that. We do believe it's been done in the past. We can try to identify those locations. Eminent domain is a lengthy and complicated process for any municipality to undertake. And we would ask that you would consider this option first in this condition first before you proceed. Thank you.
So if I understand you correctly, you're asking us to. Table this pending investigation as to the. Legality or what have you of the planning board, including that type of. Condition on approval.
Or approve it with a condition subject to that legal review being. Determined appropriate.
Is the rest of the board okay with that? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
I defer to Ed on that.
I would not rec, I understand where everyone's coming from, but I would. Recommend not putting a condition in that's subject to future. Legal review. It just leaves it too open ended, and I. I really don't think I'm going to come back with a different answer that would disagree with. Mr. Lapper's opinion on this. I would be glad to research it further, but I do not think I'm going to come back with a different opinion.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's why we. We have you with us, that legal advice. Thank you very much. We'll proceed then with a motion regarding subdivision.
Can we go ahead with that?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'd make the motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board hereby approve. The subdivision of the applicant three thirty-three Glen Street Associate LLC. For the premises identified as three thirty-three Glen Street. For subdivision as presented at the meeting, that final meeting of twenty January twenty twenty-one. And based on the subdivision map provided by. The last subdivision map from three thirty-three Glen Street Associates.
Thank you.
Second.
Back to Mr. Green. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Bob, can I just amend that, that it's Boswell Engineering's map? I knew there was, I knew there was a surveyor name on it. I just couldn't grab it right off.
Is there a date on that, Ethan?
It appears as though the last one we have dated. Is September tenth of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Next item is architectural review twenty zero zero five one. Dan McGurk, owner of tax map number three oh two point two oh dash twenty-eight dash four. Commonly known as one ninety-six Glen Street is seeking approval to renovate the existing building for use as a restaurant. Renovations include a new front facade, canopy, and back addition. Where walk-in cooler at this location. pursuant to city code chapter two twenty, section two twenty-nine nineteen E. This application requires planning board review and approval. Is there anyone here representing this application?
Yes, my name's Randall Kelly with AJ Architecture and Planning, and also on this call is Andrew Allison with AJ Architecture.
Thank you. Hi, Andrew. Okay, do you have any? Anything you'd care to discuss, add, etc., regarding this application?
Yeah, I was kind of quickly through our proposal here. We're. They're renovating the existing building to be a new restaurant space. So we're looking to. Add a canopy on the front of the building and just basically spruce up the front facade. The canopy would cover some outdoor seating. And then we're proposing repainting the front facade, but keeping all of the architectural features the same. There could be some new trim around that canopy, but as far as the main facade above that, that would all be the same and just repainted. The back addition, there currently is a. Stair access to the basement in that location. And we're proposing removing that stair access. We are creating a new stair inside the building that then would replace that. So we're proposing a covered. A covered walk-in cooler that would be accessed from the inside for the kitchen area that would be in that location of that exterior stair at this point.
Very good. Thank you. I will ask, are there any members of the public that care to comment on this application?
There are no hands up.
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Pape. That said. I will. Our architectural consultants' comments are as follows. One ninety-six to one ninety-eight Glen Street is located in the city's Three Squares Historic District and is identified as the Potter and Coles Building. Historic resource number thirty-seven in the city's register, register of state and federal historic sites. As such, number one questions, number twelve A and twelve B. And the applicant's short. Environmental assessment form must be corrected to read yes. The applicant. Excuse me for a minute. The applicant, number two, the applicant must indicate whether or not. He or she, as the owner, has received or will receive in the future any form of public funding. Directly or indirectly from any source that will finance the project work indicated as part of this application. If such funding will be acquired for such purpose. The application and project must be submitted to the chipo for their review and approval. Under any approval of this application by the city planning board, the applicant slash owner asserts that he, they, she. Have full legal right entitled to the proposed construction area at the rear of the building and will obtain and maintain. An applicable encroachment permit from the city to construct the awning of the city sidewalk at front. Railing, I recommend any approval be conditioned with the requirement that the pro, proposed sidewalk railing. Be removed during winter months and be of such color and design as to deter. Passing pedestrians from physically encountering it. Those are architectural consultants' comment. The city engineer. There's a rear modifications must ensure adequate drainage of alleyway roof drainage should be disconnected from sanitary sewer. And be directed to a stormwater sewer system. Outdoor dining area must maintain a minimum of five feet width of sidewalk for pedestrian passage. And those are the comments of the city engineer. So we'll proceed with. Comments from planning board members, Ms. Murray.
The, the colors on the, what you provided, are those the colors that you're going to go with? It sort of looks like a. A black or an olive on the facade.
Yeah, we are proposing a darker color on the front. That's not the exact color per se. We have not selected the final color. But the aesthetic of that being a darker color, a black or like an olive color, that is what we're proposing.
Okay. And then in the back, the walk-in cooler, is that going to be? It's outside the building, but it's going to be accessed from inside the building?
Yeah, so it's outside of the building. We are creating walls around that and a roof above, so you wouldn't see it, and it would have siding on that side of it. But it's accessed from inside the building.
Okay, but it will be enclosed and.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to see something go in there. I think it might be, it might be nice, but that's all my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier.
Sorry, really touched on my concerns as well, so I have no comments.
Thank you. Mr. Accardi, are you there? Are you there? Mr. Accardi? Mr. Accardi, any comments?
I have any comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Green?
I'd agree with Mr. Brown on the. And the railing being come down. And stuff like that, and I think it's a good project. I have one question. The awning, which way is it going to pitch? And what are you going to do with this stormwater and snow on it and stuff?
So we're proposing that that pitches to the right and left, and then we are proposing that that would be gutted and taken care of then. Where that gutter exactly goes right now, we've not fully flushed out, but that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
We're just to chime in, we're, we're designing it to sort of mimic what, what has been done across the street at near Mercado and. At the, the other building there, so trying to kind of stay with those, those design aesthetics.
Okay, if you're going to tie into a system, though, we would have to, hopefully there's a stormwater system there you could tie the gutters into.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's it. I think it's a good project.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I had a couple of similar concerns. The, the back covered. Cooler out there, is that going to be similar to the one that just got done down at the open door? Is that what we're looking at?
It's going to be fully enclosed with, with fully enclosed walls and a roof.
Okay, all right. So not, not open. Yeah, not, not, not just the flat wall or whatever, like, like.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any, any additional exterior lighting that's going to take place on the building?
Randy, why don't you address it?
Yeah, we are proposing two lights at the back of the building. One, because that back door now is going to be kind of a main, a more main entrance, so we're proposing. A light there just to illuminate the end of that. In front of that door, so that's not such a dark alleyway we're walking through. And then we are proposing an additional light. Up on the facade, back facade, just to kind of light the back of the building a little bit.
Right, where the, where the, the fire escape is.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The only other question I had is with the canopies and stuff, I know that the front. Facade is right on the property line, and I know on a couple of the other ones that we've done and ones that I've done downtown. I think you have to get an encroachment permit because you're building out over the city sidewalk, so that's something they'll have to go through the. The common council, but, but otherwise, no, I think it's great, you know, glad to see people taking these old buildings and fixing them up again, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had no other comments myself. I think all my questions have been answered. I guess we proceed with. Seeker.
One question, Dan. Did it get asked of the applicant about the, about Dan's comment about the public funding?
I was going to get to that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. That's okay. Yeah, I would just, I was going to refer to that in, in any resolution, but we can, we can. Ask the question now. What is, what is the status of that? Is, is there any public funding involved?
There's no public funding involved.
Okay. Thank you.
That's always my assumption, but it's always good to ask.
No, you need to ask, and I would have. Would you beat me to it?
We can, we'll be the application to reference the historic district.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, we.
I would consider it, unless the board disagrees, as a reuse of a commercial. Building, and therefore it would be a type two, and you would not have to do the in-depth seeker review.
I would agree. Very good. Thank you. That said, would you like to fashion a motion?
Absolutely. Is this, are we doing both site plan and architecture here or just architecture?
Just architecture according to the.
Okay. Yeah, I think there was a whole lot of site plan going along with it, so. So I'd make a motion that the Glens Falls Planning Board, acting as the Board of Architecture Review, hereby grants architectural approval. To the project identified as Dan McGurk. Located at one ninety-six Glen Street as presented at the meeting of twenty January twenty twenty-one.
Subject to the following conditions, I would add that. The planning board should see the final colors. They should be submitted to the planning board. You agree?
I would, yeah, I would agree with that. I would like to see the final actual mark. I, I, I would, yeah, I would agree with that. I would like to see the final actual markup paint chip or whatever.
Right, and, uh. We should include the city engineer's comment. Rear modifications must ensure adequate drainage of the alleyway. Excuse me for just a minute.
Yep.
The alleyway. Roof drainage should be disconnected from sanitary sewer and directed to a storm sewer system. Again, to your point and the city engineers, uh, or the. Our architectural consultant at the, uh. Outdoor dining must maintain a minimum of five feet width sidewalk for possessed pedestrian passage and the. Where was it? It mentioned the railing?
Yeah, the final railing must be removable for, for the winter time.
Right, and it also should be.
Painted so that somebody sees it.
Yeah, am I reading the right one?
Yeah, it's under, that's under Dan's. Recommend the approval of the condition with requirements that the proposed sidewalk is willing to be removed during the winter months. And of such color and design to deter pedestrian, passing pedestrians from physically encountering it.
Very good, thank you.
So amended.
That said, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. I'll pose a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. It's a good one.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item is. Site plan review twenty to zero zero three six. Ina Nasa Vera, owner of tax map number three oh two point one six six dash eleven dash thirty-three. Commonly known as four seventy-one Glen Street is seeking approval. To convert the building at this location from commercial multi-use to a multiple family dwelling containing four apartments. This, so what the city's only chapter two twenty, section two twenty dash fifteen D part two, this application requires an advisory opinion. By the planning board to the common council.
That is an incorrect reference. It's just in front of the planning board for a site plan review.
Correct, that's what I thought. So it's not advisory opinion?
No, I, I think that got in there by mistake because at one point this. Particular site a couple of months ago was in front of the planning board for a curb cut.
Okay.
And then they, and that was granted and then they applied for site plan.
So I'll rephrase that to say that this application requires planning board review and approval. That said. Is there anyone representing this application?
Chairman, I am here on behalf of the applicant and Stephanie Bitter. The app, so present, how are you tonight? If, I know that there are several neighbors that are also present, but if I could just give a brief presentation and then open it up to the board's comment.
Very good.
Alright, thank you. My clients purchased this property on November thirtieth. The purpose of their purchase was to renovate it, remodel it and make it their home. The proposal this evening is four unit apartments, one being occupied by them. There has been some confusion. I've seen letters that say five unit, but I just want it to be clarified that it is a four unit that's being proposed. In doing so with their financing, they must have this property be owner occupied and that is, like I said, their intention. Part of their financing was to renovate this project. Um, they received certain funds for the renovation. That being said, after closing, they were anxious to proceed with the renovations. Ninety percent were cosmetic, but they did address leaking, um, demolition. And there were some chimney concerns, so I know that Chris will identify that this week. We, it was brought to our attention that we had to submit building permits, um, as well as talk about encroachment, which we have done so before this meeting. Since the last meeting, um, that was mentioned, there were before this board for a curb cut. The curb cut was presented on Jefferson Street for the purposes of assisting them with, um, parking spaces. For this multi, multi-unit structure. But since the last meeting, they submitted to the board a survey demonstrating how they were going to incorporate those parking spaces. As well as snow storage in the area for the garbage. Um, I know those were concerns at the last meeting. The garbage will be placed, um, near the garage in the back of the home. The applicants have already talked to their garbage collectors. They know that the, um, garbage. Dumpster that they will be using is on wheels. They will be able to access that. They have confirmed that the location. Is something that is achievable with this project. The snow storage, they've already retained a contractor that's ready, willing and able to remove the snow at the times in which that's necessary. The parking spaces, they have looked into the gas line. I think that was a concern that was raised. Um, by the architects to ensure that that won't impair, um, any accessibility to those gas lines. I know that a lot of the letters and the comments of the neighbors are surrounding traffic. But as was identified with the, um, description of this project. They're converting it from a commercial use to a residential use. So with that, it will be individuals who are residing there, most importantly, the owner. So they will be very much interested in making sure that the impact to this property is limited. When I think of traffic, I, I have a business that's located at the corner of Glen and Washington. Um, I think of commercial use being more of an intense use than residential. Um, I, I know that from my twenty years of experiences and being twenty years of experience being on Glen Street and more importantly, I also recognize Glen Street as being something. That Glen's Falls is striving for and that is a, a city rural community meeting a mixed use. So that we have everybody accessing Glen Street. So I, I think. This client's proposal as to making this a residential use actually is very suitable for this area. And is consistent with which was being proposed with the zoning. As this board knows, being in the CP zone, this is a permitted use with site plan. The bulk requirements we believe are met was what's being proposed with the four units and as I mentioned on all and all, my clients are just trying to renovate the structure and make it a better location. I'll turn it back to you, Chairman Bruno.
Thank you. Sorry, I was muted. Maybe that's a good thing. Uh. Let's see, I know there were. A number of letters. I believe most, if not all of them in opposition to this. And I don't have those in front of me, but they will be. Entered into the record. I'm not going to read all of them. And as I said, I did not have time to print all of them out. I don't know if, if anyone else has them in front of them. If you.
I didn't print them all out. I have them all on my screen, but I didn't print them all out.
But. Mr. Fitzgerald, what you're, we don't need to read them all and I, I don't even know if I would identify all of the author, the authors of those letters. Other than to reassure them that they will be entered into the record and they have been, I have looked at them. Myself and with the rest of the board and they are all being considered.
Yes, they were all distributed to the board members. They'll be part of. The record. If board members have any questions on them, they can ask the applicant.
Very good, thank you.
I do have fourteen of them in front of me in paper, if you need to reference any.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. Like I said, I have them. I have them all on this machine and I have some of them printed out, but, uh. I don't know if it's necessary to read them all. They will be in the record and all of the planning board members and other associated people have them, so. That said. We'll move forward with public comment. Again, I would state that we're going to limit. Public comment to three minutes each for each person. So, Mr. Pape, are there? Members of the public waiting to comment?
Two here, Mr. Chris Remice, Remice, yeah, right, I'm sorry.
Hermitis, that's okay.
Hermitis, okay.
That Betty Gantcher.
Yeah.
Very good. We'll take, uh. Mr. Hermitis, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. First off, um, we, we appreciate the, the work and, and seeing that, that. That there's renovations happening. Um, the, the opposition for us is, is mainly. With respect to traffic and cars and I see that on the site plan, there, there's some, some spots for some parking, but. My can, our concern really comes down to are there enough spaces? On the property for the amount of cars that are gonna be occupying that, that residence. We. Own a two-family. We live across the street in a two-family. My wife and I have a car. Our tenants have two cars, so that's four cars right there for a two-family. So when, when we're talking about for, a four-family, um, that's easily a lot more cars and while I appreciate that the, the owner is gonna be owner occupied now. Just as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned earlier and, and Chairman Bruno, we can't. Predict the future of how the building is gonna be used and if we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, zone, we're gonna allow for a four, it to be converted into a four unit now. If they decide they don't wanna live there anymore, then we're, we're just opening it up to a lot more opportunity for more traffic and more cars. And we have children, we, we have a son, there's other children on this block. There is a significant amount of traffic that, that goes down here already. So we're just, we're just really concerned about changing the, the, the fabric and tenor of the street with a four unit on that corner.
Could I address some of your concerns just to, your fears?
Yeah.
Number one, we have two children as well and they go to Glen's Fall City Schools and I'm a teacher. So trust me, can, children are my number one concern. Number two, as part of our mortgage, it has to be owner occupied. Going to live here and we have no intention of moving out because A, we can't, but B, my kids go to Glen's Falls. And the third thing I'd like to address is parking spaces. I've already shared with our attorney, um, Mrs. Bitter. That in our lease, we are actually only allowing one parking spot per apartment because it is a city. It is meant to be a city, um, dwelling where people are going to be, um, living and, and working and, and walking. And, um, we are only going to have two cars. And our tenants are only going to have a total of three, one of which, one of which will be a garage. So the parking has already been addressed in our leases. There's no space for there to be more than one spot per person and we know that and we can't rent to anybody who would have more than one car. So I just wanna quell some of your fears there.
Good for doing that. I'm just, I'm gonna speak to that for a minute. Thank you for doing that. I'm also a landlord and have many. Multiple unit buildings, so I know how tricky it can be. We have just had, um. Horrific issues with traffic on that street as it is with the duplexes that exist, even though each duplex on our street has designated parking. The street is still continuously filled with visitors, guests, overnighters, even though they're not supposed to overnight to the point where we can't even get out of our driveway sometimes because we get backed in because of the narrow street. Um, I've actually had an accident backing up into our next door neighbor's guest. So it's just a concern. It's a lovely quiet street and it's just a lot of traffic. I see the buses taking the corner and if, if you've got, you know, cars in front of that property on the corner, they're not gonna be able to make it. So it is a concern. We understand. We're landlords as well. Um. So we're looking at the survey and it just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a yard full of sidewalk and actually no, there's no sidewalks because the parking spots have taken over the sidewalk. So it's just gonna be a front yard of side of. Parking spots and that's concerning to us aesthetically, um, for our neighborhood value.
Certainly, when it was a commercial real estate office, um, there was a lot more traffic in and out. And you know, at one point there was a not-for-profit there for many years and you had people constantly not only working there and donating their time, but also, um, dropping off supplies constantly. And, um, now there's gonna be much less traffic with only four families there. It is only five spots total.
And just for the record, I know that this owner occupied thing seems to be a, a sticking point, but I have talked to the clients and they're willing to stipulate that as part of an approval. That the site plan is conditioned on them owner occupying it since, um, obviously if there were concerns with parking on the street, if they're at the house, people could bring that to their attention so that the cars would be relocated.
Thank you.
So the intention is to stay for more than the allotted year. Usually with those kind of loans, you gotta put your year in for owner occupancy and then you can. You can take off. I've done it, I know it.
That's why I just said we would stipulate to it, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for clearing.
I don't enjoy moving and I have no.
Okay.
In fact, most of my possessions are in a truck in the garage right now. I sold my house in September. I have, I, I, I'm done moving for a while. Give me retirement.
Okay, uh, any more comments, Mr. Hermitis and Mrs.?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Ms. Gantcher. Hope I got that right?
Yes, you did very much. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Bruno. I live at twelve Jefferson Street, so I am on the side of the street that, um, were four seventy-one Glen Street and it's on the corner. I'm here, um, concerned about the attractiveness of our neighborhood. Once those four apartments have five cars, it appears to me at the present time. Excuse me, that there are three parking spaces. There's a garage which allows two cars to park in that driveway. And then there's another garage which allows for one car, so I can see where three cars can be accommodated. But if you're going to consider putting blacktop on the Jefferson side of the building to accommodate two more parking spots. I'm concerned that, um, it's going to really. Denigrate the neighborhood that we will not be as attractive a neighborhood. I think that's my main concern is the, about the, the two extra parking spaces that where would they be? And would that be the black topping of what is now green space? Thank you.
Very good, very good comments. Thank you.
Would you like to address those concerns or should I?
I'm actually trying to look at the Google map so that I can see it for myself, so that, since I understand that she's the one that's immediately next door. Right now, I know that there's a tree that's located on Jefferson Street and this would be the left of the tree. Um, and it would be right next to the entryway, but not to the bay window as I see the, um, survey. So although there is grass that's there, the shrubs were not, it's not anticipated that the shrubbery has to be removed. So that will be maintained, um, as well as all the other landscaping that surrounds the house and the landscaping island that's specifically located on the corner of Glen and Jefferson.
That it? Thank you.
And it's, it is also my, my understanding that our, our curb cuts have been approved. They were approved back in October, um, and our, um, since the curb cuts have been approved, we've already addressed some of the parking issues. We've addressed the aesthetics and how important the aesthetics are to us. Again, we're going to be living there. We don't want it to look bad. We want it to look nice.
Very good. Mr. Pape, any other comments?
I think Brady would like to speak again. You had your hand up.
Yes, I'm just concerned that I'm trying to understand how we might get, excuse me, I'm just gonna turn this off. How we would be able to fit two more parking spaces. As I look at the existing driveways. It would seem that the two extra parking spaces would have to be between the existing driveway and Glen Street. And all of that area at the present time is green space. And I really can't imagine how cars could fit in there without adding quite a bit of blacktop. And I really can't imagine how cars could fit in there without adding quite a bit of blacktop.
So the curb cuts have already been approved and they're for the Jefferson Street side. And so would a curb cut from Jefferson Street to the house, and we are having stoppers put so that they could never go out the house. But there is ample space for a parking spot that extends post sidewalk to the home. So a parking spot already been measured for there and there is full space. And it would be on essentially sort of next to each other before the bump out of the bay window. But it would be on Jefferson Street side, certainly not on Glen Street side.
Is, is it two more curb cuts or is it just one?
It's a total of two curb cuts, so that it, the driveway has two, there's two separate driveways. And, and they, they would go, again, they're post sidewalk, so they're between the sidewalk and the house.
Okay, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't block the sidewalk, and you could pull your car far enough that you're not gonna block sidewalk?
That is correct, it, it has been measured.
Let me interject, let me interject, hang on. In November 2020, when this came before the planning board, I think we discussed the subject, well, probably pertaining to the curb cuts. I think we extensively reviewed the parking, parking layout, we talked about the how the cars going up to the house, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Nazivera, parking up in there, and I, I, I think we reviewed it extensively, other members of the board can chime in if they wish, but.
Yes, it was actually the October meeting, because the November meeting is when we came forward with the conversion from commercial multi-use to the multifamily. So October meeting and moved to, yes.
We discussed it in, in detail, my point is we, we would not have granted the curb or recommended approval, we didn't grant them. We would not have recommended approval that the common council approve those curb cuts if we had not adequately reviewed the parking and assured ourselves at least that there would, we wouldn't want any, anything blocking the sidewalk and certainly nothing interfering with the traffic in the street. Beyond that, I must say that it's, you know, if there are problems, and I, and I'm not turning a blind eye to anything, but with many of these situations, it becomes an enforcement issue where if there are problems with people parking all night, overnight, et cetera, you have to get the authorities involved. But we, we hopefully avoid all that. I know myself, I've been in those situations and even with the assistance of the police, it's not a pleasant situation, so anyway.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
With respect to the parking, is there a, as, as I believe there is for commercial properties, is there a, a minimum square footage requirement per, per bedroom or door or whatever, like in the city?
Yes, I was, matter of fact, I was trying to look.
One and a half per unit.
Okay, thank you.
But the size is eighteen feet by nine feet, Dan?
Yes.
You need eighteen feet by nine feet per door or?
No, that's the typical parking space, the size of a typical, when you're designing parking lots, that's, that's what you use as a parking stall, if you will, eighteen feet long by nine feet wide.
And I assume that all that came up in the curb cut discussion?
Yes, it did.
That we did, okay.
And needless to say, we, we wouldn't rent to somebody who's driving around in an RV.
But this is what, yeah, chapter two twenty, the zoning code is, contains the parking regulations. It's section two twenty dash twenty-six, off-street parking and loading. And anyway, it, it's in there as, as Better alluded to, it's the formula, if you will, is one point five parking spaces per dwelling, is it, or?
What if you have a three-unit apartment?
Per unit, it's per unit, one point five per unit.
So equals six.
Right. Any other comments?
See no hands.
Any hands? As I said, we, we have a number of records or letters entered into the record. And fully consider and understand the neighbors and their, their comments, anyway. That said, we'll move on to the planning board, I'll start with Ms. Colligan.
Sorry, I have a puppy barking in the back, um, so. She's pretty adorable. I do not have any questions or comments, I think that the applicants have answered a lot of concerns that their residents have had.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Murray?
I agree, I, 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 I don't like when there's that much disagreement, I feel bad that the neighbors are, are upset. I do think that the applicant, there's a lot of questions, and Ben been very forthright with trying to make accommodations and show us what, what their plan there. So no, I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Mr. Cardy?
Peter? Peter?
That's okay, we'll move on to Mr. Green.
Hey, I've got a few questions. I think one of the problems here we're having with the people on Jefferson Street, they're zoned R1B. And where this property is, it's cultural professional, so I can understand their concerns and everything. But the zoning does allow multifamily housing in a cultural professional zone, so we're kind of limited to what we can do. But I would like some clarification on the, the parking. How are you gonna get to six, six cars, six spaces in there? I know you've got the two curb cuts.
Should I address this?
Yes, go ahead Gina.
Okay, so there's two one-car garages. And behind our garage, actually, the, the driveway is very long. So a pinch, actually, we could probably easily, we are going to put in spot adjacent to the bank. That spot ends up being about ninety degree. And we are putting in the two curb cuts which, which give us two spots and other single car garage. So actually, I think we kind of will have a total of eight if needed.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because that's one of the questions that were in the letters the most, is the parking situation. But I know in that, that short garage, that driveway is only fifteen feet long.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to have a small car, like I might have with my wife's car today, it's the CRV, and it was like fourteen feet needed to, you know, so. And you can't have a car hanging over on the sidewalk, you can't be blocking the sidewalk.
So we weren't counting the space behind that shorter garage? The, the garage that's attached to the house, we are not counting that space behind it as a spot?
No, but I'm talking in front of it, on the Jefferson Street side.
Yeah.
There's only fifteen feet there, I'm just saying that, you know, somebody like my pickup truck's eighteen feet long, you couldn't park in there, you know, in front of that. You'd have to designate that to a, to a smaller car or something, or have them park in the garage.
And that's what we are counting, that, that essentially the garage is their parking spot, because that garage is attached to the first floor back apartment.
Okay.
So that would be their designated spot.
But the one lookout is if they park in front of it, and it's hanging out over the sidewalk, that's gonna cause some problems, especially with children on the street and, you know, people going down the sidewalk. I mean, it happens all over the city, you see it all the time, but it's not legal. So I just want you to be aware of that, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Other than that, I have no claims.
Dan, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Once again, I, maybe that's a good thing. I, I neglected to read Mr. Brown, our architectural consultant, his, his comments. He says, "The building is located in a cultural professional zone, most recently contained offices and residential uses." Residential use already existing in the cultural professional zone due to their existence prior to rezoning to cultural professional. "The application proposes conversion to fully increase its use to residential use. My concern is that such a change will intensify residential use in the zone, which otherwise does not address residential use." I hear from many neighbors on Jefferson Street about their concern regarding more intense use of the corner lot parking impact and how they have an overall negative impact on the neighborhood character. Concerns, A, owner occupied quotations and quote, is not a fixed status and could really change under this or future ownerships. B, site plan shows two parking spaces illegally overlapping onto city sidewalk slash property. Distance too short between building and walk. See, parking is illegally, question mark, posed between the primary building slash residence in city street. Two twenty dash twenty-six part, I, part one, that's what I referenced. As presented, I do not recommend approval of the application. And the city engineer's comments says, "Recommend applicants seek to utilize existing driveway entrance for parking access and minimize curb cuts." So, sorry about that, I, once again, I get carried away. Any, any comments regarding those?
I just know Chairman that relative to see the parking being illegal in that section of the code, I know that when I reviewed the minutes from your discussion relative to the curb cuts, that that was already identified, that that's not applicable because of the zoning of this parcel. So and then I know that we talked about the distance, that the distance, it's, it shows in a hatched manner that it would be encroaching on the sidewalk, but the applicants already confirm that the distance is achievable with the area in which they would be placing those parking spaces.
Thank you. So we'll continue, I apologize for that, but Mr. Hall?
No, I, I mean, I'm looking at it as well, and I had the question, the same questions about the number of parking spaces. And by measuring and, and the dimensions that are shown here, and, and Ms. Nazivera's, you know, saying that they're not gonna park between the garage and the street, I can count, I can count six, including the ones inside the garage. So I can see six or seven total parking spaces, and then she said that there's one that's perpendicular in the back, is that correct Gina? Right, so you got one that's.
We haven't reported yet, but it's winter, but there's the opportunity to report there, so yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, with that being said, you can count, you know, you can count a full eight spaces and, and that obviously meets the six that, that you have there. I, I understand the stacking in the driveway and that that's gonna be something that you'll have to play the shuffling game, but that's, that's a, that's a family thing, and it happens in just about every household that I'm aware of, so. You know, I, I tend to agree, I mean, the, I, I understand that the people on Jefferson Street are saying, you know, look, this is gonna cause more intense, intense traffic over there. I, I don't know, I, I, I mean, it, it was a commercial facility and, and Jefferson's not really a cut through because it doesn't really get to anywhere, it runs up to the other street, and then you wind up at Sanford. I understand that during, you know, when the, when, when it was in school there, there was a lot of traffic that runs through there, but like, you know, I don't, I don't see it being a cut through a lot for people missing the lights like some of the other streets are. Because you really, if you, when you come out on the other end, you're kind of right in front of the school and that doesn't, that doesn't appeal to somebody trying to cut through to miss the light. You know, I, I don't think there'll be nearly as much on-street parking as there was when Sue Balfour had the, had the real estate office there, and I think that this is a, a much less intense use than that. I, I think that, that, you know, that Gina has stated, it's part of her mortgage that she has to live there. And I, and I foresee that being, you know, the whole crux of this, it's not a, it, it's not a, a tenant that, that are a, a rental unit that, that the owner lives in Florida somewhere. You know, she's gonna be there, if there's a problem, she's gonna know about it immediately, so. You know, I think those, those things, as far as I'm concerned, have been addressed. I, I know, I know the work that they do, I've seen the work that Mark has done before, so. I know, I know the quality of the work that they put in and the people that they do, so. I, I do think that the, the, perhaps the final site plan should have all the spaces identified and clearly marked. I think that would be something that, that would persuade us to say, look, we, we've shown that we can provide a total of eight spaces here. We're required to have six, so I think that would help on my end.
Thank you. The only other thing, it may be distasteful to the applicant, but I must bring it up. There was a stop-work order issued, Mr. Van, Van der Zee, do you have any comment regarding that?
I'm muted, um, yeah, I had to issue one yesterday, I've gotten, I've received, my office has received a ton of calls, obviously, about this project is very visible, neighbors don't like it, hence they call more often, so I went down. Actually, last week I sent Will, my assistant, down, and he was told they were only repairing pipes that were leaking. And when I went down yesterday, walls were ripped apart and it was definitely beyond the point where a permit was needed, hence I issued the stop-work order so we could regroup and figure out how to go forward with the project.
Thank you, you, you okay with it now or?
Yeah, I haven't seen any plans, I have no idea what's going on, I've talked to the contractor. Actually, during this meeting, he did send me pictures, because I asked him, he cleaned up the sidewalks and salted them, the sidewalks weren't dealt with. So he's taking care of that and they seem to be addressing, they got the lift out of the road that looks like the dumpster is gonna be on the land. So they're, they're trying to make the right moves to go forward. I'm sure they're gonna submit me a building, well, they can't do it anymore until they submit me a valid building permit, and then we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
So can I?
Go ahead, you're muted.
I apologize, it was my understanding, and, and this is completely my fault, our fault. I thought we could complete work on the third floor, because I thought that since that was already a grandfathered apartment, it was okay. And we had had some areas where sheet rocked, because there was some, some cracks from the, the building settling. And our sheet rockers actually had emptied out their pails in the plumbing, which had caused, caused all three of the bathtubs on, on our, in the, to back up. And so we had some decent leaks, and so that is why our general contractor, with whom I know you've been in touch, Cody, addressed that, he had to rip out the whole center wall and he said, I, I need to address this plumbing. So it wasn't because we decided, hey, let's start renovating bathrooms, it's because the sheet rock guys from the third floor actually exacerbated a problem that we didn't know existed. So that's why last Friday, when Will showed up, I said to Will, please come in, I, I know I wanted you to think that I was hiding anything, and I wanted him to see, just so you know, this leak we found out existed Thursday. And we had addressed some electrical issues that were pointed out to us when our electrician came in, so there was some of that. Of the vast majority of the stuff that was in those first two dumpsters, which have been emptied, and now that dumpster is pushed back, as far as you can see, was old cabinetry that was left in the house, so that all needed to be removed. And I also just wanted to address the lift quickly, on that third floor, since we were having sheet rock work done, we found out that there was a leak, and that chimney actually needed to come down, and so that chimney did come down. And while they were there, they said, let's leave the lift here and let's wrap your other chimney. So that's why the lift remained there, please note that we're not excited about paying the rent on that to the tune of nine hundred dollars a week. So we want that lift out there as quickly as possible, and we do apologize for the fact that it was partially on the road, partially on our property. It, I, I believe it was supposed to come out today, but now it's going to come out tomorrow. I, I don't know if it didn't come out today because they didn't get a chance to finish wrapping it, Chris, but in no way do we want you to think we were trying to hide something. It was just our understanding that work could still be done on the third floor, so we apologize.
You did raise another point. You did raise another point, which we'll address when your building permit and the fact that you have tenants on the third floor. We have to look at that very closely to see what your passive egress are. Just something to keep in mind.
Whatever you need.
Thank you. There being no other comments, I think we'll move on with has seeker been done on this already? Is anyone aware?
No, seeker was not done. But I mean, generally, this would constitute a reuse of an existing residential property unless the even renovations would probably still keep it within a type two. I guess I would open it up to the applicant's attorney if they were looking for a more detailed analysis, but I would tend to classify it as a type two.
Therefore, no further action required.
No further action.
Thank you. All right. I guess we will.
I would, I guess, looking at my other notes before a motions put forward. There was mention of making a condition that it be owner occupied. And the applicant mentioned they would stipulate to that to so that it would be independent of whatever condition is in their financing documents. So if they paid off the loan early or what have you, that this would still be a condition of site plan approval. I I believe this is already in the law, but if the board wanted to, you could put another condition, just clarifying that parking would not overlap the sidewalk, since that seemed to be an issue of concern raised. And the third condition I would throw out there for consideration would be the applicant mentioned that the leases would contain a restriction of one car per the non-owner occupied units. I guess I'll ask the applicant attorney what they would think of that, but that could be a condition in the site plan approval that there would only be one car per residential unit. So it would not just be the applicant's word on that, excluding the owner occupied unit, which could have more.
And yes, I already talked to the applicant and had them prepare the leases so that we could at least submit those pages to demonstrate to you that that was a restriction.
Okay, yeah, just suggestions because if they're incorporated into the resolution, then it's not just counting on the applicant to maintain it in the future.
So Ed, I have a question. With doing so, how does that play going two years, three years, five years, new owner? Does that stay with the property like a variance?
It would stay with the property. And if they wanted to change it, they'd have to come back for site plan review and explain what's changed and why they would need an amendment. So basically go seek an amended site plan a couple of years from now.
Okay.
Very good. No, I guess we would move move ahead with a sorry about that.
Just so you know, we are amenable to all those.
Okay. Move ahead with a motion.
Site plan. So I would make a motion that the Glen Falls Planning Board, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review hereby grants site plan approval for the project identified as Gina Nazavira located at four seventy one Glen Street, as presented at the meeting of twenty January twenty twenty one, subject to the amendments that were outlined by the by the city assistant city attorney and agreed to by the by the owner.
I'll call a question. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for listening to us. Gina, Mark, Stephanie, thank you for addressing our concerns and appreciate it.
Thanks for the clarification there, neighbor.
You're welcome.
And I believe that's it for the time being. One of these days, I hope soon, I'll get together with Mr. Fitzgerald and we can review some of the changes we'd like to recommend to the common council regarding chapter two twenty. I apologize, it's taken a long, long time. But we'll get to it. Other than that, does anyone have anything else?
No, sir.
If not, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting of January twentieth to twenty of a second.
Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Before you leave, I'd like to thank Mr. Pape, Mr. Curtis, Chris, I think you had a hand in in setting this up. I think it Zoom worked fairly well and I appreciate everybody's effort in making it happen.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody. And I have to run to Queensberry and get on another one of these.
Have a good evening, all.
Good night, all.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Stay safe.